Good evening and welcome to the April 3rd, 2017 Meeting of the Town Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Bacon, could you please call the roll? Okay. Robin Saunders.
Here.
Susan Uglis.
Here.
Nick McGee.
Here.
Corey Fellows.
Here.
Roger Bailey.
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
And Richard Dupree.
Absent.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, next item is approval of minutes from the March 13th, 2017 meeting.
I will move to approve the minutes in March of 2, please.
One second.
Um, we have a second. I will abstain since I was not here for that meeting. All in favor? So that'd be unanimous with one abstention. Thank you. And the next item, Three East Grand LLC requests a site plan amendment review for a parking lot expansion at Three East Grand Avenue, assessors map U-22, Lot 123.
Sure. Um, let's see, this is an application, as you said, for Three East Grand Avenue. This application was before the board back in December, received site plan approval to, at that time, convert what was Conroy's Garage into a mixed-use building, which is a restaurant, a few smaller tenant spaces, and then a dwelling on the second story. The property is in the TVC 4 zoning, as well as the Shoreland overlay. Essentially, what the applicant is before the board for is something they talked about back in December, where they were trying to acquire the rights with a budding property owner to expand their parking field, which would also then enable the expansion of the restaurant to be 100 seats they had originally submitted for, but had to, at the time of approval, sort of tailor back to the 72 seats due to the lack of parking. And now this expansion is intended to enable the restaurant to expand to the 100 seats, meeting the town's minimum standards for parking. So with that, turn it back to you. Um, I'll just note that, um, sorry, before I do that, in addition to staff comments, you should have also received comments from Woodard and Kern, who had just some questions regarding their drainage outlet, and then a memo from Goral Palmer, who had reviewed the traffic report and has no further issues at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the applicant representatives.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions, uh, here this evening representing the Three East Grand proposed restaurant that is well underway, given our initial approvals through this board back in December. And as Jay mentioned, we're just here for a very brief meeting this evening to explain a little bit about the expanded parking and go from there. I'd like to point out that things are win-win-win all the way around here. The Sox won today, the NCAA is on in a couple of hours. Dan Bacon's here as one of his last official functions. Saw some coquases as I wandered in the front door. That's the first for the year. And we're the only agenda item. So this is, uh, we're rolling here. This is good. As, uh, as Jay mentioned, essentially, we had introduced this project to the board and got approvals there too, that are from back in December regarding a 100-seat restaurant. But as Jay also mentioned, uh, we were in the process at that point in acquiring a lease of some additional land that immediately abutted our property, but we didn't have it yet, our property, meaning Sue and Vin's. So we ended up, uh, sort of at the last minute tailoring that back. No changes to the design whatsoever, other than we wanted to limit the number of seats so we could get the approvals at that time, which you graciously allowed us. And we told you at that time that we would be coming back in the spring, assuming that we could get that lease worked out. Sue and Vin have subsequently done so. And toward that end, we've been able to add nine additional spaces contiguous to the restaurant parking area and the site, which puts us at, or actually a little bit over, but we're looking for that, those 100 seats, uh, just up about 28 seats from the 72 that we had approved just a few months ago. So again, toward that end, it's fairly easy. There's no other changes to the site. Staff had a couple of comments, one of which was lighting. Uh, I would like to point out that, as we did before too, there is a Cobra Light that is on the utility pole that is immediately adjacent to the access. That and the fact that the restaurant is really only going to be open during the summer season, summer meaning late spring, summer and early autumn, during which daylight savings time is completely in effect. So it doesn't really get too dark during the points, uh, the times that they're open. And of course, given that area, the whole area of that particular section of Pine Point intersection is relatively well-lighted, in the essence of not really causing any more light pollution down there. We're not proposing any more light for this, this little blip of nine additional spaces. The other issue was a, uh, the staff brought up was the fence. That fence is no longer there, and we're not planning on doing anything in that area. Uh, that is a, uh, as we go back further into that area beyond the parking area, which has always been there, uh, but was owned by somebody else, is owned by somebody else. Uh, there is a lot of vegetation around that area that we intend to be able to leave there. So it becomes a natural buffer toward that end. And as Jay finally mentioned, also, as far as Woodard and Kern, the reviewing engineers had mentioned, they just had a question about the additional stormwater flow from this particular parking area, not causing any redesign of the receptacle for that stormwater, but just making a note that we may want to take a look at the size of the riprap that's there. We certainly do that, but actually, this isn't really an increase because the area that we've now acquired by lease was actually impervious surface before anyway. So now we're improving it, we're paving it, uh, but as it, as we had noted, and the DEP had noted in their permit, uh, it was already impervious surface. So there's really no issues as far as that's concerned. However, given staff comments and Woodard and Kern's comments, we'll certainly address those. And, uh, as the condition of approval, we should be all set with that. So given that, I'd certainly be willing to ask or answer any questions, address any comments. And ideally, what we'd like to be able to have is Planning Board approval this evening, with the condition of approval that as soon as the traffic movement permit that Bill, uh, the, uh, traffic engineer who's with us this evening, in case any questions do come up, has indicated would be safer all the way around to be able to have that traffic movement permit as opposed to the traffic entrance permit. The point being there is that that's probably, uh, five, six, seven weeks out. And rather than coming back to the board once the permit is in hand, knowing that we're going to get, we had a meeting with the DOT just this past week. It's just a matter of timing. So as a condition of approval, we'd like the board to approve this project this evening if possible, and then just have staff review that when it comes. And we'll go from there. With that, available for any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you. Before we get to that, we do have the opportunity for public comment on this. If there's anyone who'd like to make any remarks. Seeing none, we'll turn to the board. Uh, Nick, do you have anything on this?
Uh, sure. The, um, the lease, you have the lease, correct, for the spaces? How long is the lease currently? Five years. All right, and...
It is renewable.
I guess staff, I had asked staff, if it doesn't get renewed, what do we do? That they've now been approved for excess seating, and they maybe lose portion if they don't renew the lease or something?
So, so very similar to the prior approval, um, in which they had two lease agreements that also had expiration dates, one being the DOT land, which is the principal parking, sort of at the corner here, East Grand Ave and Pine Point Road, as well as the off-site parking up on Snowcanning. The condition of approval essentially stated that should either any of those leases terminate, that, um, essentially, they would have to cease operations until they come back to the board to revise their, um, site plan approvals. So I would, I could foresee where if that were to expire, they might come back before this board and say, can we go back to 72 seats? Something to that effect. But, um, staff, as part of one of the conditions of approval that I've developed, it's what's now seen as 2C, um, ref, is in reference to that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks. Susan?
Thank you. Um, I'm a little confused about the lighting issue. I was looking at the, um, April 3rd draft motion and got even more confused. Okay. Show me on that where the lighting presently exists.
Uh, by way of quick orientation, this is East Grand, this is Pine Point, the intersection. And there's a pole that's right here that has a Cobra Light on it.
And that is considered enough to cover even the new parking area?
We consider enough for that, given that, um, again, the timing of the year, we're not open during the wintertime.
What are the hours during the summertime?
Uh, it goes from there.
You need to, I mean, I'm sorry, but we really do need to have the person who's answering the questions, be it the like.
Sure, I understand. The people who are operating the restaurant will be actually living or part of it, living above there. But the hours of operation, as far as the patrons are concerned, will start at 11:00 a.m. And then the restaurant closes as far as any additional food preparation at 9:00.
At 9:00. Okay. I'm gonna say that, you know, 9:00 o'clock is not that light at the end of the season. It just isn't. I mean, we've all lived here a long time, right? By 9:00 at night, I don't think that that's gonna be adequate. I would, I would like to have that at least discussed again. Has, has the staff had a discussion with them about lighting, or am I just...
Not since our comments went out, that we identified on the existing photometrics plan that there is no lighting.
And that said that on April 3rd, we said that lighting details are to be revised to ensure adequate light levels are provided in the expanded parking field for visibility and safety while respecting the budding properties. Was that including the lighting, the, um, additional parking that we're discussing tonight?
So the draft conditions were based on the staff comments. And so, yes, the draft condition right now, based on what staff comment was about ensuring there's adequate lighting in the area, was for the applicants to revise the plans to be approved by staff at a later date. If the board was comfortable with that, or...
I'm not comfortable with that. Um, with, with the prep, with the previous parking, I was not particularly pleased, but, you know, it is, this one's off to the side and behind the building, and I don't know.
I understand. And if it, honestly, Susan, if it comes to that, we're happy to do it.
Even something on the building, like that it has an auto off, you know?
Sure. I would just like to point out that it is a halogen light. The Cobra Light is a halogen light, and the furthest portion of the parking is only about 60 feet away. So there's a lot of, it's not direct. It's obviously a direct over the road. But the ambient light is fairly substantial. Now, we could put something over there. There's gonna be a support pole on that side. And if we need to add a light, we can, but I really think that that might be overdoing it.
Well, I'm not a great fan of overdoing light, but on the other hand, this is hard for me to envision just how much light there is, you know, ambient light and so on. I mean, it's hard for me, as just a board member, to understand exactly what's gonna be covered. I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna have to trust that what you say is, is true. And there, there is a pole there if we change our minds?
Yes.
If a, if town decides it is not adequate, we can come back?
Sure.
Help me.
Well, I think if the board has concerns, and if you, um, you know, as Mr. Fisher's saying that, you know, we wanna believe that there is adequate ambient lighting in the area, and I think that certainly is possible. I think the way the condition's written at this point potentially would, could get us there in terms of, um, uh, staff could work with the applicant and their engineer to understand what the current condition is out there. And if, if we're not satisfied, we could speak to have them put in additional lighting in.
Okay. I'm happy with that.
We'd be absolutely happy with that.
I'm happy with that.
I think the way the condition's written could provide that type of flexibility. Or we could revise it a little bit.
And where are we with, with the fence? The chain length, bleh. The chain length fence has come down.
That's correct.
Are we putting nothing back up? That is around the expanded parking field.
That's correct.
And I under, and I do, I, I know the situation, and it does back up to, um, essentially the edge of the marsh.
Yes.
So I can't imagine that anyone's gonna go driving their car. Uh, that's happened in my, my tenure here in, in Scarborough, but I don't think it's gonna happen there. So I don't have any real problems with that. I'm gonna have anybody, anybody else on the board that's interested talk about, um, in fact, it might be yourself, talking about the, um...
Runoff?
Yeah, thank you. That's the word.
Yep.
So knowing that that will be handled, I will say thank you and move on.
Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, Jim, could you talk to us about, um, the direction of runoff from the parking lot, the additional parking lot, where things are going?
Certainly. Essentially, what we have is parking lot, the overall area right from here is a drainage. There's a manhole that's right down in here, and then there's another one that's right over here. And then the town is actually gonna be adding yet another one when it does the, uh, the improvements along Pine Point.
By manhole, do you mean catch basin?
I'm sorry?
By manhole, do you mean catch basin?
Yes, I'm sorry, catch basin, yes. So the drainage for the overall area from essentially this section of the property is coming this direction. So this is well, um, even though it's right next to the marsh, it's actually going to be graded, so it's coming right down here. And keep in mind too, if you would, that because we're not open during the, uh, the off-season or the winter hours, you know, everybody always has, you know, some questions and issues about, well, what's the potential for the freeze-thaw cycle and, uh, any potential black ice? But we're not gonna be open during those hours, or during those timeframes. So there's no issue as far as that's concerned.
Have you reevalu, have, in the original grading plan that you gave to the engineer, the town engineer to look at, did it include grading for that area?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, is it fairly steep enough to avoid what's happening around the perimeter of the, of the parking lot, so that we're, basically what I'm getting at is to avoid run-on into the wetland area?
Uh, that's correct. That's why it's graded that way. There's a very small portion at the very back end where the fence was that will actually just go that way because that's the way grading naturally goes. So most of it is coming toward the parking lot.
Okay. And are you gonna be putting any sort of like traffic protection or barriers around? Like, it probably won't suit itself to curbing, but, you know, the, um, the, the concrete logs...
Curb stops.
Yes, curb stops, thanks. I couldn't think of the word. Okay. So you will have curb stops there then?
Yes, those are along, all the parking, all the parking stalls.
All right. And so, um, the amount of area then that you're adding on, when I go to the stormwater narrative that you included, on page one, um, sorry, page two, it says approximately .71 acres of additional land. But the pages after that, page three and four, say .071?
Uh, it's the latter. Keep in mind, this is only, it's nine spaces, uh, that's about 1,800 square feet per space. And then you've got the, the middle section, um, so it's only, I'm doing this in my head, off the top of my head, the entire area is only about 3,500 square feet.
All right. And I'm, I'm sorry, I forget what, which, which is latter and which is former. So is it .071 or .71?
It's .071. .71 would be...
An acre.
Fairly substantial portion of an acre.
Okay. So it is .071?
That's correct.
How much disturbance do we have in total between the new lot and the additional one? Has, has that been calculated, that new trigger, or that calc, that...
I'm not sure I understand the question.
This is primarily redevelopment, but you're gonna be coming and redoing parking areas and things like that. So have you calculated what your disturbed area in total will be for the two parcels?
Actually, it's gonna be, we're decreasing the overall, if you're looking for like disturbed versus...
No, I'm not talking about impervious area. I'm talking about how much you're, how much you're disturbing of the earth, meaning pulling up impervious area and the like. So I would encourage you to, to just sum that up and give it to staff because it's to just make sure that you're not triggering any one-acre thresholds for construction general permit purposes, kind of a thing.
We can certainly do that. We're not even remotely close to an acre.
Excellent.
Um, on the original approval, you did have a total disturbed area on their plans. And so it's just a matter of making sure that's updated for this.
Right. And in that total area too, Angela, if we could think about where the contractors' lay-down areas are going to be? Cause that's gonna, that area there, we wanna make sure that we keep them out of the wetlands and not infringing upon that. So if we could be thinking about that, where the contractors are gonna lay down and do some serious staging or de-mobilizing and demobilizing of equipment. Last question, um, on page three of your stormwater management narrative, you, it, it, the voluntary remedial action program certification that's been provided for this parcel is referenced. Could, um, it says here that a copy of the VRAP document and the environmental management plan are included in this submission. Was it included to the town previously, or it was?
Yes.
Okay.
That was actually for, um, the, when it was still Conroy's Garage.
Okay.
They actually had it. It carries over to the property, obviously. It doesn't matter who the owner is, but...
Is, is the nature of that just specific to the tanks getting pulled, kind of a thing, Jim? Is it a typical tank pull? There's, okay. I think that's it?
Thank you. Roger?
I really don't have any questions, other than I'm just kinda curious about the lease for the extra parking. Is it, um, does it coincide with the additional off, off-site parking in terms of the term, you know, five years and...
They were all five-year leases.
Okay, all right.
They're different owners, obviously.
Yeah, sure.
We're unlikely to, I mean, we're unlikely, but we're unlikely to lose this lease because that parcel of property is, um, it's not possible for the owners of the landing to access it in any other way. They can't access it from the Pine Point Road. They can't access it from their property. So it's kind of a win-win for us to be together with them on that.
Okay, good. And the only other question I have is on the traffic movement permit. Is, is, um, yes, are there any red flags there, or is that just basically a pro forma thing that's gonna go through?
Um, I wouldn't say it's quite pro forma, but there's, there's no red flags whatsoever. We came very close to not needing it, but as Bill, who's relatively conservative, which is why we use him a lot, um, had indicated, by doing so, by having a traffic movement permit, that essentially eliminates any points of contention, uh, in the future going forward, no matter how much additional parking there may be anywhere in that area.
So, so, um, you're planning to open May 1st? Is that what you, is... So you, so you may not, so you may not have this other permit by then?
Correct. The additional parking and the additional seating, but we have a special area, too, as well. We would be able to do something to the senior, and something would be on that specifically.
Sure, yeah. Sure. And regarding the, uh, lighting on the, um, did I say, I didn't have many questions? Regarding the lighting on the parking, the additional parking, and I, I would like to think that if you, if there was a problem there, you would do something about it because you don't, you don't want an unsafe situation down there, so...
Absolutely. The only other thing I want to say on that, right, is we're trying to really, right, to be dangerous.
Sure.
There's another problem here, especially in the corner of the barrel, other construction. People want to ask on this, and it's like actually over the top of it. So if it's really necessary, we're absolutely willing to do it, but we really don't have to, um, um, um...
Okay, I'm all set.
Thanks, Roger. Rachel?
Uh, yeah, I, I'll go back to the lighting, and the one thing that occurred to me is because you will have staff living on the second floor, correct? Presumably, when they're done with work, they're gonna be walking other places. I would doubt that many of them have cars, if, yeah, but they're gonna be walking around. So for those purposes, the, the extra light, I think, might be, might be helpful because you will have people out in the dark.
And, and like I said, we're, we're willing to go out, but this backyard is completely enclosed by sun. And this is the recreational area, right, from the upstairs. And there are several lights in this backyard area, and they're mostly protected. So they actually don't allow the light to be in our backyard area. There were lots of departments, but they have, they're, they're showing us.
I still like the idea of, of that, of that light, um, for the purposes of pedestrians after dark, especially because you do have folks living there. Other than that, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think I'm gonna pick up on the, the lighting conversation. And I think where I come down on this is that, um, while I, I appreciate concerns about having adequate light, and I think that, you know, we can sort of wordsmith something in the condition of approval here that addresses that and provides the opportunity for town staff to work with the applicant to figure out whether anything more needs to be done. And I appreciate the applicant's willingness to do that. I also, um, am always sensitive to issues of light pollution, particularly when you get down in the Marsh and Beach area, which is one of the few parts of this part of town where you can actually see the stars once in a while. And as stated, there also are some neighbors there, and so there's, it's a whole balancing act. And I think at the end of the day, we're all pretty much on the same page on that. So, um, it really comes down to semantics to me in, in terms of how we word this condition of approval. And when I put that forward here in a moment, you'll hear what I have in mind for that. And anyone who has any other thoughts can certainly chime in. But I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with the town on that and just generally be responsive to, to the concerns that we and others have had long, going back to the, the original parking concerns and the willingness to consider doing valet parking if necessary. And presumably, this will, this addition of spaces will, will mitigate that issue. Beyond that, um, I think the, the, uh, the stormwater question has been discussed pretty well, and we've conditioned here, alluding to that as well. I don't think I have any other questions. I was gonna ask when you plan to open. I think that's gonna answer it as well. That's more of just a item of curiosity. But with that, I will put this motion forward. I move to approve the site plan amended, the amended site plan of Three Grand Ave, East Grand Ave LLC for the addition of nine parking spaces associated with a mixed-use building previously approved at Three East Grand Ave with the following... building previously approved at three East Grand Ave with the following conditions. Number one, the restaurant seating is limited to 72 seats until such time as a traffic movement permit is secured from the Department of Transportation. Number two, prior to commencing work in the area of the expanded parking field, the applicant is to revise their plans to address the following. A, lighting details are to be reviewed with town staff to ensure adequate light levels are provided in the expanded parking field for visibility and safety while respecting abutting properties. B, the note on Plan Sheet 3, under condition of approval, condition number one, will need to be updated to include reference to the lease agreement for the three acquaintances' property. And C, address the adequacy of the primary drainage point located north of the proposed driveway. Plans may be reviewed and approved by staff. Number three, all prior waivers and conditions of approval from the planning boards, December 12, 2016, approval remain effective.
That is a motion.
Thank you.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck. We have a staff report.
I will turn to Angela and then to Dan, see if they have anything to report. I am good. Mr. Bacon?
I have no staff report, no.
All right, administrative amendment report.
Nothing reported this time.
Any planning board course comments?
Oh, is that like Town Planner's lot?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize that the name's been changed.
Yeah, we changed the name to encourage all staff to participate. But that's okay, well...
Would you like to, well, it's now that my resume's complete, and I've taken minutes and acted as recording secretary, I think you all know, I'm kinda moving on to a new adventure, so I just wanted to attend this evening and indicate what a pleasure it's been working with you all, and working for the town of Scarborough, and, you know, working with the planning board, Longreach Planning Committee members, and Jay and Angela, and I'm, I'm really gonna miss it, and I've really enjoyed it, and, but I think you guys are very much in good hands with the staff that you have, and I'm really impressed right now by the board makeup too. We have a, it's a diverse board, you have good, good balance, some newer members, some veterans, so I'm sure, I'm sure the development community and the process will be served well. So, I'm leaving the situation in good hands, but I just wanted to, to attend and thank you all for working with me over the years, some for just a short time and some for much longer. It's been a good experience for me, and I'm not gonna go too far away, so hopefully, once in a while, I'll be working in Scarborough and see you guys again soon, so just wanted to say thanks and good luck.
Thank you. And so, that's a good segue to planning board comments, and I'll go ahead and go first and just pick up on that, and thank Dan for everything he's done for, for this board and for Longreach Planning Committee and planning in general and the town in general. I've been very fortunate that my tenure on this board has coincided almost exactly with when he, when he took this position, and he's really set a great tone for, for the rest of the staff and the town as a whole, and I can say, having been on the other side of the podium in different municipalities, in different parts of the country, that, that Dan's professionalism and, and the professionalism of the staff as a whole really stands out and competes favorably, and I think sometimes we can take that for granted, but I think we should all appreciate that, and I know that people from, from outside of this room and various applicants who've come in front of the board feel the same way and have, have said so to me, so thank you and best of luck, and definitely happy that you'll still be somewhat local. Yeah, thanks, Corey. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
I second what Corey just said, that was great, Dan.
Praise your church.
Yeah, we appreciate all you, we really do. Wish you the best.
I can't help it, I have to say it. This town has come a long way in the past, what, decade, an awfully long way. Things have just not the same as they were. We're much more professional, and I think we're more trusted and admired around the state and the, and the wider community, and the work of the planning board is basically a lot easier, because we know what we're dealing with, and all of that is relatively new. It wasn't always like that, and Dan has done an enormous amount to make it like that. We're a very professional group, I think that we come into a meeting prepared, we pretty much know what to expect, and if we don't, our answers, our questions are answered, and we're a functioning whole, and it's gonna be an enormous whole with not the W in front of it, when Dan moves on. The only reason I'm not more upset than I am is because she's not leaving the area, and I would like to think that when we get to the point of saying, can we call Dan and ask him a question, that maybe, just maybe, somebody will say, probably not, but, you know, we can think about it. There's nobody who knows us any better than Dan does, I'm gonna miss him. I wish you good luck.
Yeah, I'm, I'm new clearly to the board, so I haven't had a lot of chance to work with you, but from just a short experience, this is a very professional board and a very professional operation, and I've admired the work that has gone on in Scarborough. As a matter of fact, when my husband and I started looking at towns to settle in, we took a look at the, the structure and the planning in Scarborough and where the town was going through its plans, and I'm very happy we settled, and I'm happy, actually, that you've been here as long as you have to, to help the town move forward like that, and I'm sorry to see you go, but congrats on the new job.
Roger?
First, before I say anything about Dan, I want you on the, I'm attending the first transportation committee meeting. I don't know if that's gonna come up at any time.
Oh, no, that's... All the planning board comments?
It was basically just a summary of everything, you know, the Eastern Trail, Eastern Road, and what's going on at 114 Gorham Road and things like that, because there's myself and Chris Chieso, he's, he's the new liaison. And so, that was, that's gonna be interesting, it's gonna be pretty exciting, what's going on, and Angela was there and Dan was there. Dan's going to all these places to get all these accolades.
That's right.
But I just wanted to mention that I first met Dan, I met Dan when he first came to town, because I was on the SECO board at the time, and I found him to be a very approachable, very even-handed demeanor about doing things. What I, what I, like most is, he, he was willing to show some initiative, to do things, to develop strategies, then he reached out to the community to bring the community around to, you know, understanding what, what his strategies were and everything, and, and I think that that was very good, that's a very good approach that he implemented. Later on, as, as part of the revision committee, which started about 10 years ago, when, when did you first come here, in 2006?
2004.
2004, okay. One of the things we, we started to deal with was the perception that many in the area had of Scarborough as a difficult place to do business with, and Dan and his staff were instrumental working with the SECO, with SECO to really kinda turn that around, so where now I think the, the developers in the area, as well as the public, sees a much more predictable process, and Dan deserves a lot of credit for that. So, I, you know, I, the town's losing a real good, a real good professional, and I'm sure you're gonna do well wherever you are, and hopefully, hopefully we can find a comparable replacement. Good luck.
Thanks, Roger, and I didn't intend to come this evening to put all these praise and accolades.
Yeah, but you did.
I think there has, you know, a lot has changed since 2004, and it's, I think it's really about the team that we have right now, and I think the planning board's been experiencing that team for a number of years without me being here. I mean, the planning board, Jay and Angela, you guys have it dialed in, you've had it dialed in for quite some time. There was a lot of work in the early years to kinda get it in the right place, so I'm really excited about where you guys are and where you can continue to go with everyone here, Jay and Angela, Karen Martin's a huge contributor to kinda a lot of the things you're raising, Roger, in terms of the development community and helping shape projects in a way that's good for the project, but good for the town, and helping shape the ordinances in, in the same manner. So, I appreciate the, the comments and the praise, but I think the town's in a great situation, really, because of some of the things I've done, but many of the things that others are doing with me. And then, lastly, I guess one of the things that I'm most sad about is you're about to kick off a comprehensive plan update process that I think's gonna be really exciting and kind of has the potential of taking the town to, to the next level in terms of what you're working on, what you're thinking about, on, on how the town's growing, how it's being conserved and everything in between, so it's a pretty exciting time, I would say, and it's an exciting time for, you know, somebody in my seat to kinda get oriented to the town. It's a great time to learn a lot about what people think, you know, looking backwards as well as looking forwards at the local level, at the citizen level, I should say, and, but also with planning board and all the various committees that are gonna be really key contributors to that, to that planning process, which I, I know the planning board will be, and many of you are also on other important committees to, to plug into that, so I just think it's a, it's a really, the next year or so is gonna be really pivotal and interesting for, for you all as the town really takes the, the next, next step, so thanks for the, the comments and accolades, but I just wanted to, to note that I can't do it single-handedly, and we've done a lot of great things as a team, and I think you'll continue to see that, so...
Thank you. Let that be the last word, unless anyone has anything else. Move to adjourn?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.